So once this comes on.
So we should be good.
Not crappy one.
Yeah.
Takes a second, it's still going.
It's still going, yeah. I don't know, I shouldn't have done that earlier.
Okay. Hear anything now? So we should be all set.
We're good. Yep.
Okay, it is seven thirty PM and I'm calling to planning board meeting to order for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five planning board meeting to order. This meeting is being ordered by each committee. And because I believe we have one member appearing via Zoom, I will take more. So when I call your name, would you please indicate that you're present? Pat Norton, I don't believe he was present.
Did somebody reach out to Pat? Mark, do you have Pat's number? Because I didn't realize it was changed to the COA. So if you didn't check his email today, we just found out today that it was here, right? You sent out an email today. And I think we were all under the impression that it was still at the library. So do we have Pat's number to call him?
So Jonathan Pour.
No, Jonathan Pour, present.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, present.
Amel Delaples.
Amel Delaples, present.
That's her.
Here.
Darcy Dale.
She says she's under the phone number four seven three. Darcy.
Wait for someone. Yeah, they're calling.
Jeff Austin. Wilson and Matt. I'm not quite present. We'll try and connect with Darcy because I know she's not appearing by Zoom. Okay, so we're here today and our primary business is to consider a report and recommendation and the two. It's my understanding that changes that we discussed at our last meeting, a reduction of square footage from eight thousand to four thousand square feet. The three A overlay district on Asbury has been affected and we did also make certain that changes were discussed.
Mark, she said you need to let her in, Darcy.
I think she's at the phone.
Do you have the password?
She was trying to speak.
She said she's muted by you. You need to unmute her. Yeah, we know, yeah. We know it's a cell, your cellphone thing. Oh, it looks like she, are you trying to speak, Darcy?
She might be.
I don't know what to say. I'm going to ask her to see if she can, we can't hear you. She just asked. I'm going to send her the Zoom link and see if she can come in on Zoom maybe? Because is she on Zoom on her phone? But I think she can, if she has Zoom on. Is that a dial-in or is that?
Hey, John, could you try saying something?
John McGrath, can he say something?
We see your lips moving, but we can't hear you. He's texting somebody. I don't know who you're texting, but.
Technical difficulties.
John McGrath is texting somebody here in the room.
Darcy, I guess it's the lower right.
Can you get him on a laptop?
Darcy, can you hear us? I can hear you down.
You don't have Pat Norton's phone number?
It's unstable connection.
Yeah.
So you didn't find Pat's number?
We can hear you now, John.
Darcy, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep. And do we find Pat Norton's phone number or no?
Sorry about that, I don't. Let me check if I wouldn't start before I'll get out.
I'm sure.
I just got on to Zoom.
Well, I think if he's.
But I was able to have the connection and my problem is continually refreshing.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm. Okay, I see that I'm there online and I'm also on Zoom. Okay, thank you so much. So we can proceed?
So Darcy is here, Darcy Dale.
So we made, as I said, we made the correction with respect to square footage that Bill Wheaton suggested at our last meeting in the three A overlay district on Asbury Street. And we also accepted the recommendations to section nine point eight point four regarding non-conformities. And those recommendations were ones that Town Council, Robenstein, suggested. So I believe our appendices are in the shape that they are intended to be in. I don't know if select board members have had an opportunity to review these materials. The explanation that Mark Connors produced is very helpful. These two appendices have to work together. And in fact, appendix B in large measure amends appendix A. And if you were to just read them, unless you were very, very intuitive, you might not understand that. And so at our last meeting, Robenstein walked us through how these two appendices operate. And the reason we have to is because of the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section five, which provides for a majority vote on Section three A compliant districts and a two-thirds majority vote on any other land uses regulated through what hopefully will come together as Sections nine point eight and nine point seven of an amended zoning by law. So with that said, I think we can really turn to the report and recommendation. And in this regard, I sent to Mark for distribution to the planning board, a memorandum that I prepared this morning for your consideration. And so I think we're going to have to just take a few moments to enable the planning board to review that memorandum so we can then discuss the ramifications of this vote and recommendation. And the other item that we might want to talk about, and it's something that unfortunately the select board can't actually address because they don't have a quorum, Amel put together a flow chart as to how appendix A and B work in the event of positive votes or negative votes. So there are essentially four permutations. And we want everyone, the select board and everyone at town meeting, to understand those ramifications. A yes vote on Article one and no vote on Article two. A yes vote on Article, no, a no vote on Article one, a yes vote on Article two, two no votes and two yes votes. I mean, and it all plays out differently. But with that said, what is important for me in this meeting is not how any of our planning board members intend to vote on July fourteenth. That is not the issue. The issue for us tonight is whether we will issue a favorable report and recommendation. And the reason that I urge you to do that, and it's all set forth in my memorandum, is that if we don't issue a favorable report and recommendation, then the planning board is barred for two years from reconsidering any of the articles that were put forth at town meeting. Now, with that said, we could still be required by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to adopt three A compliant zoning, but we would not be able to address any aspects of the Form Based Code. Am I stating that correctly, Robin?
Well, so do I get that on my.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I'm going to come up and say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, you hear it.
Sure, I can, yeah, say that, I guess.
Perfect.
That's on the assumption that there was a negative vote on three A.
So. General Law, good evening, everyone, folks watching, Robenstein from KP Law. General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section five, contains a provision that says if a zoning by law amendment fails at town meeting, that amendment cannot be brought back for two years unless it has a positive recommendation by the planning board. The most recent case law evaluating what a positive recommendation from a planning board means is the first time it went to town meeting, not the second time it goes to town meeting. That's the recommendation that matters. That's the most recent case law. So as your attorney, I think it's safe to, you know, operate under the presumption that if it's not recommended this time and it fails, this amendment can't come back. Now, you could come back with a substantially different amendment to accomplish three A or to do other rezonings, but an amendment that's substantially the same as this, I think that you should be operating under the presumption that it would not be able to come back for two years.
And so my takeaway from that is that by issuing a favorable recommendation, the planning board is basically reserving for itself flexibility and the ability to change whatever we have done or bring it back again in the same format.
Your batteries run, you got to plug in your computer, sorry.
So it's, so I want to give everyone an opportunity to read the memo because it is not really about the vote on the fourteenth, but preserving our ability to do a good job for the town depending on the outcome of what happens on the fourteenth.
But isn't it most likely that people look to our recommendation as how they're going to vote? So shouldn't we each be voting how we feel like we're supposed to be voting and not?
Well, that, that's entirely up to you, but there's no law that says you can't stand up at town meeting and say you voted a favorable report and recommendation to give flexibility to the planning board, but you don't endorse three A. There's nothing that prevents you from doing that. But by doing the positive.
And a favorable means four out of seven if we had seven people here?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I didn't know if that meant it had to be unanimous or if that was a certain percentage.
No, it does not have to be unanimous.
And we don't have four, we have six.
You have six, you need four. Either way, you need four.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
So take, please take a moment, the memorandum is dense.
Mark, is this the same one that's up on the website?
Yes.
Yes, I have a copy here too, but this one.
So the argument is that if Form Based Code got turned down and we voted three A, which we pretty much have to, that there would be a period of two years in which the downtown, the only governing zoning for the downtown would be the overlay district.
Well, three A, the three A districts, but this.
Existing zoning.
And plus existing.
Existing zoning, yes, yes.
Got it.
So I looked at, you know, different arguments that have been advanced with respect to three A, and I addressed them in light of the Milton case, the recent Plymouth Superior Court case and the regulations. With all that said, I mean, I respect the opinions of people who think that three A is a bad idea, but I think as a practical matter, it's here to stay. And although the regulations may be tweaked here or there, I don't see any real avenue in the, within a one or two year window of having the whole apple cart turned upside down.
When's the next gubernatorial election?
Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six.
Exactly.
All right, there you have it.
And even then, do you think there'll be a change in the legislature? So, you know, it's, it's a tough road.
Right, but it is the executive office of state government that's enforcing this.
Absolutely, with the, with the imprimatur of the SJC.
Most towns seem to have a beach, not with the legislature, but with the executive office.
Right. But the legislature enacted the statute that the Supreme Judicial Court said the executive office can oversee and the Attorney General can enforce. Crystal clear. Mark, did Darcy get a copy of this memorandum? I know I didn't circulate it.
It's in the packet, isn't it?
It's in the packet.
Look for Bill Wilson, please. Just, I just know that he's, may be able to join remotely. I reset the link.
So, question, Robin. So a favorable result, a recommendation by the planning board is for both the articles?
I mean, I, if, sorry, I just want to turn the sound off of this. If you, you know, wanted.
For the, for the two-year moratorium.
Yeah, it's on any zoning by law amendment.
Okay.
That's the rule, regardless of what it is. Anything, any zoning by law amendment that you're doing is subject to that.
If you vote no on any particular vote, then that is not a favorable recommendation then?
Yeah, favorable would be affirmative.
Would you recommend that we do a favorable vote or depending? I'm not going to tell anyone how to vote on this particular issue, but on each article? Or can we combine the particles or can we just vote on section nine point eight and nine point seven as they would be inserted into the existing zoning by law?
So going in reverse order of the three options, I wouldn't just say nine eight, nine seven, because there's a lot more in here than just nine seven. So I wouldn't do that. There's changes to ten six, there's eleven definitions, so I wouldn't do that. I think it would be sufficient if the board said, we vote to recommend that, you know, for example, if the motion was, I move the planning board, you know, report to town meeting that it recommends town meeting approval of, you know, the total proposed zoning by law amendment, I certainly think that that would be an appropriate recommendation. It would cover both of them.
And it covers the definition and all the.
Because you're voting on the whole set of amendments. I also think if you want to take separate votes on one or the other, you can, you can say, we recommend approval of the amendments at fourth in Article one, we recommend approval of the amendments at fourth in Article two.
But I think the two combined is probably sufficient, yeah.
And I, but if we do two separate, I also think that our votes may feel different if the first article fails. So like if I was to vote favorably for Form Based Code, that would be contingent on the first article passing. So that's how I would put the motion.
You could, you could say, a motion, that's a really good point. So you could also, another fourth option, you could have a motion that says that the planning board recommends that town meeting approve the proposed zoning by law amendments at fourth in Article one, and so long as Article one is adopted, approve Article two. If Article one fails, then the recommendation, well, let me, actually though, I think you still, I think for the two-year purposes, actually as I think about this, you want to just have favorable recommendations.
Right.
Because if you recommend referring it back, then you're not getting a favorable recommendation.
Right. That would happen at town meeting.
Yeah, that would happen at town meeting, someone.
Somebody has to refer. Okay, that's fine, I'm just trying to think it all through.
As am I, and I think if you're concerned about the two years, the best course of action is just to take, is to recommend to town meeting that the total by law amendment contained in Articles one and Article two of the warrant be approved.
Okay.
That, you know, and then at town meeting, you know, again, if the first one fails and the consensus is we don't have the mechanism for the second one now because the first one failed, someone can just make a motion.
So one of us needs to make that.
Or, you know, somebody, anyone can make a motion, somebody can be prepared to do it, but anybody who's a town meeting member can make a motion simply to refer it back to the planning board for additional study.
So we recommend both?
Yes.
But they do have to be separate?
Yeah.
They have to be separate votes.
Separate votes at town meeting, yes.
And it says right in the second article about the referring back.
Yes.
At the very end.
It's in the explanation.
Yeah, in the summary.
It's in the explanation.
It does say that if Article one doesn't pass for some reason, then it would be recommended to refer it back to the planning board.
And if the, the motion is made at town meeting to refer it back to the planning board and that motion doesn't carry in the vote with the town, if the town votes against
Referring it back.
Back, then we're back to the two-year moratorium?
Well, no, I mean, then it's still before town meeting and town meeting would need to do something. So you pass it or, but if you, if, again, if, if it's coming to the planning board with a favorable recommendation from you, then whether it passes or fails there, you don't have a two-year problem. You only have a two-year problem if you do not recommend approval and it fails.
That's the one, yeah, I wanted to understand both pieces.
And.
Marty, do you think, is it a good time? We do have a quorum now, maybe I'll just call to order the meeting for the select board, that way we can have a joint meeting here. So I see Bill.
I'll let you, I'll let you call to order, I'll let you take the orders that you're there.
All right, it's Bill Wilson, I see that William Wilson has joined the call around seven twenty-two or so. He is online, but we do have a quorum, so we'll do a roll call, starting with Ben.
Ben Galloza, present.
Bill?
William Wilson, William Wilson here.
And Bill Wilson here. So the select board is.
In order.
Okay, great, great. So has everyone had an opportunity to review this memorandum and assess where they are coming out on this? Anybody have any questions? Questions for me, questions for Robin?
Yes, Marty, can I be recognized?
Absolutely.
Just to play it back so I understood it. If both articles are voted favorably, then we don't necessarily have to, at the town meeting, we don't need to refer it back. So let's say that Article one failed.
No, no.
I get that correct?
It's a done deal.
Yeah, so the way that, just to clarify.
Just so I understand, like, whatever's about to happen next, then I'll, I'm just trying to keep up.
Just to clarify the way they're set up, because, and I went, I mean, I've explained it to the planning board, and we talked about it a month or so ago, but just as a refresher. So because forty eight five essentially says zoning by law amendments are effective when they're voted, when we have one that builds on another one, we usually set them up like you do one, you presume it passed, you do the second one. So that's, that's how these are set up. So the second article doesn't repeat anything in the first article, it makes additional amendments, and in some cases, so in some cases, it's adding new information, and in some cases, it's actually mending things that were just adopted in the first article. So if the first article fails, you lose some of the framework you need for the second article.
Yeah.
So we had discussed that it would probably make the most sense if the first article fails, to simply have a motion at town meeting on the second article to be referred back to the planning board because it's going to need to be reworked, it doesn't really stand alone.
So the second article can't stand alone anyway?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
So.
One last procedural thing, sorry, Marty. If a motion is made at the town meeting. If a motion is made at the town meeting to refer it back to the planning board at the town meeting, you know, we have all our clickers and everyone's voting whether or not to refer it back to the planning board presumably. Is that a two-thirds, or is that-
That's a majority.
That's a simple one, okay.
Okay. Do any board members wish to make any comments in support of my memorandum or in take issue with any of the contents of it?
So, you, I think your memo, this was all helpful, the flow chart, so you talked about the two-year moratorium and really preserving your rights and flexibilities, I guess, going forward. Is there anything you, the planning board feels it takes away from you down the road, you know, that might have been better suited if you didn't recommend it? Or is it all flexibility, you know, to the favorable action today?
It's really just flexibility, because there's nothing that would preclude planning board members or anybody else from voting the way they think is best. And it really comes down to whether you think the form-based code is something that we should really endorse and promote, because it basically preserves essentially almost the same density that exists already in the town center, but provides enormous other benefits to retain the, the scale and, and whatnot of the existing downtown.
I think the selling point of the form-based code is one selling point, is enhanced if we approve three A. Because you can go to the town and legitimately say, with form-based code, the downtown will be better protected from any kind of adverse development that happens in response to this three A goal, because we will have greater, effectively greater design and revenue powers. And so, if you're worried about the future of the downtown, you're more worried about the future of the downtown under three A, then you definitely want the form-based code, because it provides you with, you know, greater guidance and regulation.
Right, and those, actually, what I did in this memo is I attached the tables from the appendices so that that you could see all the different aspects of how structures have to be designed. Do you want to add to that?
I'd like to say something. One of the common misunderstandings that I've heard before is that that EO HLC will just ignore the code and just come in and do what they want in the downtown. And I've heard that before, and what happened in this process is that our consultants worked with EO HLC to be sure about their conditions, what would still constitute a three A house or, or project. And they complied with all of that, and then they listened to the town about what type of character you want in your downtown. They listened to all of that, and they produced something based on metrics that complies with what three A requirements are. So, it can't be denied, because it's, it is consistent with what those requirements are. And it does something that's consistent with, with what the town wants. It is, in effect, a protection for the town that previously did not exist going forward in terms of sizes of buildings, locations, and all of that. So, that, that's been, again, a misunderstanding that somehow HLC can override your local zoning, but they, they can't, because it is the law.
And the metrics currently conform with three A requirements. What I'd also like to add is that even though we were a bit rushed to get this all pushed through, because there were so many moving parts, there was a delay, then there was deconstructing into two pieces, which Robin helped us immensely with, and, and one thing we didn't really have time to do was really take it for a thorough test drive to make sure that there weren't any sort of loopholes or unintended consequences. But I think the good thing about form-based code, and Matthew's online and could attest to this, is that if, once the town takes it for a test drive and there's something they want to amend in the form-based code, that can be done. So, it can be refined to better and better reflect what the town's goals are downtown.
So, are there any towns that have form-based code that have complied with three A that we know of?
There are very few towns that have form-based code at all.
Okay.
Um, I can think of a couple, but I don't know that they've necessarily done them for their three A zones in a form-based way. I mean, EO HLC does allow for design guidelines, so certainly there are communities that have levels of design guideline, but I can't think of any off the top of my head that are as comprehensive as what you have.
Well, let's think of this as a real asset, that we have something that no other town has.
No, I just, I think, no, I just figured it would be good if, if, that somebody else had it and they've already gone through the process,
Right.
how it went through with the EO HLC.
Matthew can probably speak to that better than I can to the point, as he was on. But if, if the terms are all different, they're all different in a way.
Right.
He can probably speak to that better.
Belmont has some form-based pieces in their, in their three A zoning. It's not comprehensive, it's not as detailed as the one you have, but there are elements of it that are prescriptive and form-based, and I think-
But there's, there's, there's an overlay district. They presented a three A overlay district. In Belmont.
Correct.
Yep.
And I think Brookline has some, not everywhere in their three A district, but in some portions of it, extremely prescriptive form-based elements, everything down to the, the profile of, you know, architectural cornices and things like that. But they, they come in different forms, and, and I think the one that we've put forth for Hamilton is a, is a very nice balance between some just straight-up dimensional requirements that can be translated into three A compliance, and then good sensible kind of language and imagery about, you know, where parking should go, landscape features, things that you don't have in your zoning now.
So, the point of all this also is that, that form-based code was actually conceived well before, before three A showed up on the horizon as a good thing for the town, just that three A arrived simultaneous to the form-based code effort. And so, the, the task was to meld the two, but that wasn't the original mission. The original mission was to incorporate form-based code into the downtown for a better downtown in a way that protects and envisions a downtown that's more in line with what Hamilton values and has more protection than your current zoning does. Forget three A, just your current zoning. So, that was the original vision.
Right, and, and the three, the form-based code is much more protective of what the citizens expressed that they wanted than the existing zoning, which is really use-oriented. So, Pat, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the memorandum that I-
I was actually reading your memo while experiencing a powder outage in Ipswich at New England Biolabs, which is why I liked it.
Okay.
I don't blame you for it. But, yeah, I did read it, thank you.
They have a statute of that witch in Salem, I mean, you could put one of me out, if I could do that.
We liked you too much, Marty.
I did have a chance to read it, thank you.
Okay, good, so we're all up to speed. Now, so does anyone else have any comments? I obviously have put my thoughts on paper, and everyone knows where I stand, but if anyone else wants to-
Well, I, I just wanted to say that Middleton has appealed the unfunded mandate denial from the Superior Court, so that is still outstanding. I am concerned if we pass three A, as I've said before, it's simple majority to pass, two-thirds to repeal it, and I'm concerned that we may lose standing if we put form, if we put the three A into place and that, that the appeal comes back in a favorable manner from Middleton, because that would potentially close the door for us.
I, I, I will take a little bit of issue with that, and then Robin can jump in, but whatever a court determines with respect to Middleton may or may not have broad application. And so, really, for Hamilton to preserve its rights, it would have to commence some type of litigation. And frankly, I thought, I, I read the complaint filed by the ten taxable inhabitants of Hamilton, and I thought, and this is just my opinion, that their arguments centered around the train station were probably the strongest, and they were the most pertinent to Hamilton, that they were unique to Hamilton. And so, with respect to the unfunded mandate, the, the ten taxable citizens had standing under the unfunded mandate law, but they will not have standing to represent the town of Hamilton. And so, so Judge Gildea, he, he, for the sake of argument, said, I'm going to treat the ten taxable citizens' arguments as, as though made by Hamilton. Now, whether that was an error of law or not is, I'm not going to opine on that, because it certainly didn't give Hamilton an opportunity to say what they wanted to do vis-à-vis that announcement, but so it's, it's difficult.
Right, well, and I want-
You can't necessarily extrapolate, maybe you can't, maybe you can't.
So, one other thing that came up-
And, 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 and there's no telling what the result of that would be and when any definitive ruling would happen.
Robin, is that your assessment as well, then, as kind of?
I mean, they filed an appeal, Bill said, I, you know, the fact, I mean, they don't, it's funny, we were just talking earlier, Matthew and I happened to have appeals on the same day at the appeals court, we saw each other over there, and neither of us has a decision yet, so we were talking about the timing, and you know, you can't predict when it's going to come down, some things take longer than others, but, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in this, and I think, you know, I think what I'm, you know, obviously, it's just, it's not my, I don't have any skin in this game, but I think what you're saying are, are questions that we definitely will hear at the town meeting, right? Those are things that-
Right, and I think it's important for us to at least acknowledge that those are out there, because we have people who, I mean, I just think it's important. The other thing that I was just seeing today is Wenham had a reduction from the seven fifty to like three hundred and sixty-five units, which is like a fifty-one percent reduction.
They never had, they never had that amount.
No, I think it was originally everybody, you had to ask for a reduction.
No.
And we got a slight reduction.
No.
For the record, that's not true, so Wenham's number was never as high as our number.
No.
Because the, the, the formula is based probably on how many units you have existing in Wenham's numbers. Well, well, that's why we-
No, it was seven hundred and fifty was the minimum, and then you had to get a reduction.
I don't, I respectfully, I don't believe that's-
Okay, I will find that, and I will send it on.
I don't believe that that's-
I did not check that today, but that is my memory, is it was seven fifty was the minimum, and then we, different towns got different reductions. Wenham getting like a fifty-one percent reduction, we only got a three percent reduction. So, that is just concerning, because we're like practically the same town. The other concern I have is with the specialized and stretch codes for the building codes, the under, you vote those in, but then some of the underlying guidelines have been, become stricter and stricter. So, is there ability with the EO HLC to say, instead of seven hundred and thirty-one units, you're now going to have to have a thousand units without coming back to town meeting, because that's what's happened with the stretch code and the specialized code and the building codes, the energy codes?
I mean, again, the regulations are what they are, the calculations have been done.
Right, I'm just saying, like, we're, we're saying there's a zone here, but can the EO HLC come back and say, now, instead of seven hundred units, we want a thousand?
So, I think that's unlikely, but obviously, I can't tell you what anybody would ever do in the future, but I think it's highly unlikely at this point that they're going to increase numbers. And if you have compliant zoning, you have compliant zoning.
So, if our zoning is compliant, then, because it does say it's conditional, some of the people, letters have come back conditional?
That's because they're recommending that towns make changes. So, if they, you know, they're conditional, if they're saying, hey, this is an issue we don't need to look at, or, okay. None, none of us, including me, sitting in this room, can ever predict what's going to happen in the future.
Right.
We need to, you know-
Well, I'm just saying, we have a precedent with the specialized and the stretch codes, where those codes have actually gotten stricter over time. And so, when we're voting this in, I feel like people need to know that the underlying could change.
That's a topic for town meeting. Our topic tonight is really simple, whether we want to-
Okay, and I have one, I have another issue with one of the things you've said, is that you think that it's, you know, we're not going to have growth. Lexington has a thousand out of their fourteen hundred units under development in less than a year. So, while I think people say it could take ten to fifteen years, if we're going to vote something in, we have to be ready to handle all of it all at once, because that's basically what we're saying, because it's by right. I mean, that's by right.
It is certainly by right. Again, every community is different, so if Lexington would have that infrastructure where developers could come right in and hit the ground, they could. You know, there's many, many, many communities that have adopted three A that haven't had Lexington's experience. So, I can't speak to why each community would or wouldn't. You, you are correct, the minute it comes in, it's allowed as a bright, but whether you're going to have a equal experience in Lexington is-
Oh, no, I'm not saying we will. I'm just saying, I think the community needs to be well-informed, like, we've asked for fiscal statements as well as public safety and other risk assessments, and I don't think anyone's seen any of those things, and I think that's a fiduciary responsibility we have to the town, and I don't think that has come forth. And I, I'm concerned about voting for something when I haven't seen any of those things that might help us understand what this might look like.
We are not voting on three A compliance zoning or a form-based code tonight. We're not voting on it. We are merely making a favorable report, so the planning board's hands are not tied for two years. And as I said, each member of this planning board can vote each article any way they want, and they can speak in their personal capacity at town meeting and raise all the issues that you're raising now. But that's not the issue for tonight. The issue for tonight is, as a planning board, do we want to empower ourselves and maintain our flexibility to address whatever comes down the pike within two years? Or are we going to say, okay, let the chips fall where they may, and in two years, we'll pick up the pieces?
I think, is there another consideration to be made, too, and our recommendation may influence a decision to move ahead with the date in a couple of weeks from now? Or, I think, acknowledge the fact that we have a less-than-perfect application of what we set out to do, and I think maybe it's fair to also, like, publicly acknowledge that nobody in this room knew when we decided to prioritize three A as, as, as a, as a purpose and goal in the form-based code, that it would then, many months later, require us to split the code and dissect it in a way which makes it very confusing to understand and have two articles that are now like majority and two-thirds, and then like, what if this happens or that happens? I don't think anyone understood that to be true when making that decision. Many, I mean, it was only until last week, I think, you figured out.
I take the cake for being the most perplexed.
But, but I guess to acknowledge that as a group and understand that we're in a situation where we have an unintended consequence of a decision that was made to prioritize this as a goal for form-based code and not realizing that it would end up in this weird dissection of two articles.
Well, because of chapter forty-eight, section five.
Exactly right.
So, our next topic is going to be that flow diagram.
So, would it have been more ideal if we were looking at ideals to pass the form-based code first? Like, if we had, like, going backwards, would it have been more ideal to have passed that and then brought three A in afterwards?
I'm not sure in the last analysis it would have made any difference.
I guess what I'm, what I'm doing-
Now, they're happening simultaneously, so-
Right, I just didn't know if that might help people wrap their head around what Pat's saying, but-
To finish my thought about the question of timing and how our vote influences the select board's decision to move forward for July fourteenth or not, a lot of the work has been done to develop already. It, the work, the work is there in front of us to just modify it in a way that creates a very simple three A overlay district, like every other single community in the Commonwealth has done, and, and tee that up for vote. And it's one vote, it's one article, it's overlay district, three A, very simple. Keep the form-based code in our back pocket and keep it as intended, you know, as is originally intended for, it goes in perfect.
Well, but that really opens the door to, to, to the kind of three A development that none of us want.
Not really, because a lot of the protections Matt described last week said could be written right into that overlay district. The three A overlay district could have the elements of the-
This is what Bill did last week. He wanted to start over at the end of the day.
I want to start over, too.
Since you're now attributing something to me. I actually had conversations with seven people about this, and they, I was surprised, I was pleasantly surprised. They all said, oh, yes, form-based code will help protect us. And if that's the view of the voter, then you want to pair these two together, because having form-based code makes it, makes three A seem a little less unknown risk, because we have more controls. If you were just voting yes or no on 3A, then you're kind of like, you want the bad world or the good world, or we're going to sit somewhere in the middle and go through court cases for the next 20 years, um, but if you do the two together, you can legitimately say, we will have more control over 3A.
I, I think we're not doing the two together, because they're two separate articles, and we've separated the two-thirds vote from majority vote, when we could have an overlay district that's just majority, and has form-based code components weaved into the overlay district.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole another six months or a year, another contract with UTL, I mean, we could do that, but I'm not sure there's any advantage in doing that, is there an advantage in doing that?
I think we should-
No.
Uh, I don't, I don't have my gavel, it's in my car, I could go get it, um, uh, I think we should that this up, because we're, we're, the issue is simple, it's whether we, uh, issue a favorable recommendation on these two articles, yes or no, it's not about the ultimate vote, that, that's a conversation for July 14th, and everybody has their own opinion, I have mine, Beth has hers, I'm sure Darcy has hers, but, uh-
You understood that.
Understood, I understand, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Are we ready, uh, to vote on this?
Did, did Pat know that we're thinking of potentially voting for favorable for both of them together?
Yes, he, he read the memo.
Yep, yeah.
He got the memo.
All right, all right.
He got the memo.
Great, I'm just making sure.
And again, you can, it's up to you, you can do one motion that just says, you know, the, somebody on the planning board moves to make a report to town meeting to favorably recommend that town meeting adopt both articles, if you want.
I, I think that's the simplest, the most straightforward, and I-
So, if you vote no on one, then you're going to vote no on that whole, if somebody wanted to vote on one part, no, and not necessarily the other part, no, they're going to vote no.
But they're tied together, and that's, that's just what-
It doesn't help the planning board.
It doesn't help the planning board.
Okay, you can take two votes, I'm not saying you can, I'm just, the most simple would seem to be one, but the board, to the board's pleasure, how you want to vote.
It's, it's simple for us, I think, but it's, the reality is still true, that in town meeting, there's the two votes.
Oh, like, we're not talking about town meeting.
I know, I know, I know, but, but we're recommending that we, that we proceed with both articles.
Right, for a specific purpose, and that specific purpose, I mean, if you want to stand up in your personal capacity and explain why the planning board voted the way it did, you're welcome to do that at town meeting.
I'd rather, um-
Okay, I have a question, though, on here, on the article, it says, you know, what the fa-, what the report vote is, so we would just put-
Whatever the vote quantum is, so-
But even though it, it's not necessarily reflecting why the vote-
If you want, if you want to take two separate votes on each, you can-
I just wanted to point that out, however people want to do that, so.
And again, the, so, you know, different towns present the planning board recommendation at town meeting differently, I always think it's great to have in the warrant, just in case it's something minor and somebody forgets to stand up at town meeting and say anything, but a, you can give a oral report at town meeting as well, so, you know, the planning board's vote can be presented through Marnie, or explained, or however you folks want to do it, just because it says it in the warrant, doesn't preclude you from saying anything you want at town meeting, I, as your attorney, like to see it in the warrant, because then I know, check, the recommendation's been made, it's there, but, I mean, lots of towns also have a planning board presentation for their zoning amendments at town meeting that explains them and explains the planning board's recommendation.
So, if we're going to vote for both of them, I think it should be noted on both of these, that our vote is on both of the articles at the same time.
Right, I mean-
If that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be clear with what people think, yeah.
I mean, again, if you take one vote tonight, and, and it's, the planning board moves to, um, report to town meeting that it favorably recommends adopting both zoning bylaw amendments as opposed to Article One and Article Two, I think it, it's fine if the warrant just says the planning board recommendation was favorable by a vote of whatever.
Oh, and you can do it on each, because it applies to-
You'll put it in each, but I-
But, but what I'm saying is for them to know that those were voted on together, uh, well, because I, like I said, for me, I would potentially vote different on those two different articles.
You can, you can vote differently, you don't have to do one, you can take two.
What you're saying is you want to vote, have a, 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 a vote on Article One, and then a vote on Article Two.
She's also saying that she would like to have it at the, at the front, that the public knows that it was taken as one vote, so when they read the warrant-
If we take it as one vote, I'm not, I don't, I'm just saying, there may be people who would vote for the form-based code who wouldn't, 3A or vice versa, I don't know.
Why don't we take a vote to see whether we want to do it?
Well, let's take, get a motion, somebody want it?
Joe, did you have something?
Just briefly, a point order, the, the warrant is the select board's, if the select board, if you recommend the select board that you would like it represented that way in the warrant, I'm sure the se-, the select board would take that under advisement, make an amendment to the warrant language tonight, so that I could make that change tomorrow.
We can do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear to the voters.
That's the select board's wishes collectively, we will take that under advisement.
Well, if, if, if it makes you happy, we can vote on Article One, and then we'll vote on Article Two, it has the same effect in my, you know, for me, but if it-
Maybe somebody wants them together, I don't care, I'm just saying that that, I-
We're just saying that we need to say upfront-
Right.
You know, what, what the vote was and-
And how it was taken, that's all, that's all I'm saying for clarity.
It may be better to just take two votes, if it's going to be problematic.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I will entertain a motion, I move that the planning board, what are we doing?
Reporting.
Recommends, recommends Article 202561 for the town, just that one order.
One second.
Second.
So, just to clarify, you, you're recommending the report to town meeting, that the planning board recommends favorable action, that the town-
Recommends favorable action on Article 202561.
And I had a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, so when I call your name, please indicate whether you, um, uh, support that motion, Pat Norton?
I would recommend, if we're held to a timeline of July 14th for these articles, that we, that we support these two articles, I believe what we have done is, uh, try to design a hybrid bike for mountain biking and road biking, and we've ended up with something that doesn't do either one very well, um, so, if we're forced to move forward with what we have in front of us, because of a timeline and a date of submission, then I would, uh,
Recommend approval of Article One. Great, okay.
With preservation.
That doesn't get on the warrant, sorry, Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amel Dalquist?
Amel Dalquist, aye.
Beth Herr?
Nay.
Darcy Dale?
Darcy, I had to mute you, because there's some background noise, but, um, you should be able to unmute yourself.
She is, she's, uh, the phone number, yeah.
Yep, she's coming back in, yeah, it's coming back.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I am going to vote no, I don't want unintended consequences, and I don't believe we've had the time to really go over everything that we need to understand.
Okay, and Marnie Crouch, aye, so the planning board, um, uh, votes by one, two, three, four? Five to two, to approve, uh, Article One, so I will now entertain a motion on-
I make a motion that the planning board recommends approval of Article 202562 to the town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Pat Norton?
I recommend, uh, that we support Article Two if Article One passes.
I don't think we can do a caveat.
That would be a different motion, honestly.
Yeah.
You just got to vote on-
I recommend, I recommend-
And you want to make a friendly amendment?
No, no, I just recommend we support it.
Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton?
Aye, Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amel Dalquist?
Amel Dalquist, aye.
Beth Herr?
Aye.
Uh, Darcy Dale?
Darcy Dale, aye.
And Marnie Crouch?
Three votes. So, that's unanimous.
So, that's unanimous.
Three votes, because we echo.
Seven to zero, okay. All right.
All right, uh, Bill, I don't know if you wanted to jump in, or, after listening to that, I mean, we did get a-
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm here, I mean, I'll let you run, run things, but I don't have a question right now, but I think that, you know, we gotta, I mean, I'm, like, I guess I back to the original thought, is that we got to put this in front of the town to vote on, so, regardless of what we think might happen in appeals court, um, we're going to let the town decide if they want to take the risk of losing state grants, and what they want to do their town, I don't think it's our decision to make, I think we got to put our best product in front of the town and let them vote on it.
We'd be looking for votes for recommendations, and then to finalize the warrant language as proposed to you tonight, so that we can have you sign the warrant, if that's what you want to do.
Right, no, I think, you know, like, from a timing perspective, we're definitely, you know, overdue to bring this to the, to the public and, and get a community, uh, vote on this, um, so definitely for, to stick within the timeline, uh, I think July 14th, uh, is definitely something we need to do, you know, we just listened to a good discussion, you know, but I feel like, you know, what you voted on, your recommendation was really to preserve flexibility going forward, not each individual's opinion, you know, of, of, of whether or not, you know, this is good articles, right, I mean, if you sat here and we said again, like, how would you vote, because I do think the public looks to you, looks to us on what's your opinion, maybe that will lean how I'll vote, you know, I don't know that, this helps them or confuses them, I'm just, you know, from what I heard, um, so I do think-
Yeah, I think you have to say, I mean, I think like that fiscal, all those things, they're going to read our recommendations, and that's why I couldn't vote for it, because I felt like, I don't want to mislead people thinking this is a great thing, because people will ask me how I think they should vote, and I, you know, I-
Is there any advantage in another motion that says if the first article goes down in flames, that we move to table, to refer back to the planning, the second article, back to the planning board?
I mean, I-
I mean, it's something we can do on the spot, do we need to have our ducks lined up for that?
I, I don't think you need to take a motion to do that, I think-
That might be, that might be construed as a, a negative.
Yeah, I don't-
It's a vote of no confidence. We have the mechanisms in place, as discussed earlier, to revert back if needed, so.
We just have to, among ourselves, understand that if Article One fails, that-
Someone needs to make a motion.
Someone needs to make a motion to, uh-
Refer back to the planning board.
Refer back to the planning board.
And it's in there, too, so I think that's helpful.
Yeah, so I think, as a select board, now, are we going to follow this, a similar path, or do, do we want to recommend, and on how we feel, you know, are we recommending, yeah, a lot of work's been done, this is our, this is our best, uh, foot forward, you know, we, we're going to have form-based code, which will put on those restrictions to mitigate, you know, a lot of the problems people fear with 3A, um, so do we, is that our, are we going to take a similar approach and a recommendation?
First, I just want to thank the planning board for all of the hard work, um, I know that it's been extremely challenging over the past several months in particular, under, need to kind of pull everything apart and understand how it all then relates back to each of the two things, I know it's just been a lot of, uh, late nights and very hard work, and I want to thank you, I think you all have done a fantastic job, um, even right up until today, putting together additional documentation, such as the memorandums and the flow charts, uh, Mark as well, uh, your, your memos, and getting everything organized, it's just been a huge lift, and I just want to say thank you for that, it shows, and, um, I think that you all have done, in the discussion today, and outlining how this helps, um, kind of protect the town from, uh, unintended consequences to the greatest extent possible, um, given the tools that you had at your disposal when 3A hit this town, um, and integrating it in with the form-based code initiatives, I think you've done this town a, a great service, um, and I do think it's time to get this before the town, I think that the downside risks, um, are too great to delay it any further, uh, and I was very pleased to hear favorable, favorable action on both articles as well, that gives you additional protection and flexibility to make changes in the future, so I think that's really important, that people recognize what you did tonight, um, gives you further flexibility, that you've been constantly optimizing for that under a lot of pressure and a lot of time constraints, um, that I think are necessary, so that we're not in violation of any of our state's laws, um, and so, thank you very much, um, I just wanted to state that plainly, and that I appreciate the discussion, uh, including us tonight.
So, you have a thought, huh, so, I, I guess I'll entertain a motion, um, we'll do separately, just similarly to what the planning board just did, so for Article One?
I'd like to make a motion that we, as a select board, um, recommend and include on, uh, the upcoming special town meeting, Article 2025 slash 61.
I second that.
Okay, we have a first, a second, um, we'll do a roll call, uh, Ben?
Aye.
Bill Olson?
William Olson, aye.
And Bill Wilson, aye, so that passes 3-0, uh, can I get a motion for Article Two?
I'll motion, uh, that the select board, um, vote for favorable action and includes a warrant, Article 202562, the zoning bylaw amendment.
I second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, again, Ben?
Ben Glusa, aye.
Bill Olson?
William Olson, aye.
Uh, and Bill Wilson, aye, passes 3-0, uh, two abstain on both, uh, I'm sorry, absent.
Can I get a motion to, uh, accept the warrant as proposed, uh, presented here this evening?
Uh, a, a, a point of clarification, so, uh, Mark, uh, drafted an explanation of how these two warrant articles work together, and I think it would be helpful if that actually appeared on the warrant, particularly because, uh, a lot of people don't print out the warrant, um, the appendices or anything else, so if they don't, if they just look at the language of the warrant articles themselves, they're, they're not very informative, I, I mean, no offense to Robin, I called it a word salad, but it's, it's just a lot of words, it doesn't actually, I mean, I'm sorry, but it's just a lot of words, it doesn't really present a picture of what the town is trying to do through the appendices, and then the finished, um, articles, so, so that's, that's a question.
Where, where are you stating what pieces are in that she's referring to versus?
I think it's worth confirming, but there's something in her, sorry, it's brief summary, and it's all in italics, and I thought that was Mark's summary.
That's Mark, yeah, I started taking that, and I put it in the warrant.
Okay, so that is in the warrant, okay, so-
A secondary question would be, would there be any value, while we're all together, to talk about the usefulness of a flow chart?
Absolutely, you stole my thunder, that was coming up next.
I, 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 I put it out there last meeting.
I think Joe wanted one more motion first.
Go ahead.
I would love to have one more motion from the select board to accept the warrant as presented here tonight, so that they can vote, close the warrant, and agree to sign it, uh, because I have to post this Monday.
Okay, but that contains-
We will definitely do that.
That contains the ex-
It contains the brief summary, what you have in front of you-
The expla-, explanation, okay.
The brief summary that Mark had drafted.
Yes, that, that was my only question.
And then we can, as far as presentation materials, both prior to town meeting and at town meeting, we could have that for the rest of the evening, if you like, but I'd love to close this out.
And this is, this is on the website now, as well.
Yes.
I saw it up there earlier today.
Yes, we will need to update it to reflect their recommendations, and Amel has something to add.
I, I would like to, it discussed as a group, too, I'd like everybody's input, because it's so important for people's understanding of this very complex issue.
Right.
So, I'd like everybody in this room to have input on this idea, and-
Can we do that sort of as any other, as additional business at the end?
No, this is everybody, but the flow, the flow chart was primarily for this vote tonight with the boards.
Okay.
Uh, we now have a public, we want to-
Public version.
Take this into a public version, it's, which means, uh, uh, kind of correct some things and maybe clarify some things, uh, because we, we brought a certain amount of knowledge into this to lead to a vote, but some of that knowledge won't be, uh, held by, um, people in who are going to vote on this.
Do, do we need, doesn't matter the order we go in, I know you want, want to get this, and we have every intention of, of, uh, of closing this and such, but you want that right now versus any discussion? So, uh, either or, I mean, we're going to have it, we're going to go through that discussion, it's very important, I want to understand what gets up, whether the reports, who's saying what.
Just so we're not, we're not solidifying the form, the chart right now, the flow chart, that's all I'm doing.
Does this need to-
The trouble will be in the warrant, so-
Yeah, the flow chart won't be in the warrant.
That'd be in the presentation material, it wasn't on the website.
The explanation would be, is what we're after, yeah.
So we can close the warrant, I believe.
I'll entertain a, a, a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty, um, oh wait, that's, yeah, six thirty PM at the...
That's good.
Second that.
Okay.
All right, we'll do a roll call, Ben?
Ben Glusa, aye.
Mr. Olson?
William Olson, aye.
Diane, Bill Wilson, aye, the warrant is closed.
Thank you all.
You bet.
All right, let's talk logistics.
Do you need this to sign?
Yes, I have, I have, there's just Mark on here.
So I had mentioned it as an idea for the, both for planning board and for the public, um, the idea of the flow chart, because number one, with the separate warrants, it's confusing, number two, with one amending the other is confusing, and, um, I think it's really helpful for folks to understand the, the framework, why it's broken down, and what the votes mean, and, um, I, I just think of sort of a visual clarity to all those words would be useful, so I would love to have, you know, Robin's input on, you know, the clarity and accuracy of the legal aspects of it, um, and, uh, you know, every, like, and Joe, your, your comments on how you feel in the fly, you know, with the public, and that obviously the select board's opinion, because it's part of your, your warrant article. And then, and then the planning board hasn't had any opportunity to comment on any of this, so it's really a roundtable.
I did take a look, an initial look at the one with Mark's recommended changes, I thought it, they made sense, if you guys want to use it, I didn't have any issues with the way it presented anything, so when everyone's done discussing it, I know, to be honest, I'm recommending changes, I can read it again, but, um, first take, I thought it was fine.
Want to go over your ideas for changes, anything?
Yeah, um, this all came about today, so to kind of finalize thing, so, um, my, as I, as I mentioned previously, it might, for the general public, it might be better to provide, provide a little more information without getting as too complicated on that, to be sure, just to elaborate again, or, uh, clarify what it is they're voting on, and the one thing I would add to the chart that, um, Mark created, um, is to actually put a result or a consequence below each of the two articles, in other words, Article One, three A majority vote required, there were two options, yes or no, that's an appendix A, and what are the consequences if, for example, three A is a no, uh, and that's where I would put as of, like, something like as of seven twenty-four, twenty-five, the town will be three A non-compliant, form-based code will be incomplete, and there'd be a two-year moratorium required, uh, on a form-based code in absence of a PB positive, uh, recommendation.
Well, we have that...
Yeah, so the, the...
But I can...
This has to be amended.
That doesn't follow if we vote down three A, that follows if we vote down the form-based code.
No, 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 no.
The planning board has favorably recommended both amendments, so you should not have an issue with a two-year prohibition at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does that come out?
Okay, I'll take it out, and then, and then there'd be, uh, also, uh, comment under, uh, the yes column, so this is a yes for the majority, three A vote, a yes decision will be required on Article Two to fully complete the rezoning to protect the town's center, uh, and then a second bullet is a full three A compliance with form-based code for protection pending a yes decision on Article Two, in other words, it's just acknowledgement that Article Two is a completion of, uh, an amendment to Article One, uh, and it's, so that's just stating, if you approved it the first time, then you have to pay attention to what's in the second, uh, the, the second article, and then, after the second article, there'd be four options, you could do no, under the, under the form-based code, uh, Article Two, uh, a no and a yes are the two responses for each of the two parts to that, one is for the, um, uh, if you voted no for the first time, there are two options after that, going to Article Two, there's a no and a yes column, again, that appeared in the chart, and then if you, if there's a yes vote on the Article One, then it could be no or yes on Article Two, so again, co, uh, some bullets underneath, uh, the yes and no answers, so people can see what the conclusions are or consequences of voting a yes or a no for each of one of those, so that was, the major change, change was inserting comments after Article One as boxes, which would be, um, that was one of, one of two flow charts or context, uh, articles I would recommend, the other is to actually provide some information on what is in the article, and this was one that, um, um, where I had, for example, under Article One, majority vote, I had two bullets under that, again, this is a description of what are they voting on, Article One provides for new zoning for multifamily housing, three A permitted by right, as noted here, and I took this information from actually what Mark had drafted for the draft explanation, but again, just condensed it as information, so people would just be reminded, uh, that was a long two-page article, but this was, this is just down to a couple of bullets, uh, so Article One, multiple, multiple family housing, there are three bullets under that, that's in three new town center sub-districts that would replace the existing base zoning, either business or R one A on the affected parcels, two is a new three A multifamily overlay district encompassing two articles on Asbury Street outside of the town's center, and the third one is because Article One and Article Two together contain all of the form-based regulations, only one cannot be a complete code, and then lastly, Railroad Avenue, Bay Road, and Walnut Road, most of Hamilton's commercial land uses were excluded from multifamily housing to protect the town's core commercial tax base and to provide the planning board with greater control over mixed-use development in these areas, so that's information before you make a vote, so now you have two options, you vote no on Article One or yes, for the no, then you go to Article Two, and if you vote no, these are the consequences, or this is what's facing you for Article Two to vote, number one, the planning board recommend that Article Two be referred back to the planning board, well, we can, we can, I can scrub that now, uh, Article Two incorporates new zoning districts not permitting multifamily housing as of right, including the proposed Depot Square and Bay Road Civic, uh, sub-districts, replace the existing base zoning of business or R one A on the affected parcels, and the existing business district and Willow Street overlay districts would be eliminated if they would be superseded by the new zoning requirements, so again, that's appendix B, if the vote is yes, uh, for Article One, then Article Two incorporates new zoning districts not permitting multifamily housing as of right, as noted, so again, whatever your inclination is to vote on that, you have sometimes duplicate information, uh, again, the proposed new Depot Square and Bay Road Civic sub-districts replace the existing base zoning of business or R one A on the affected parcels, the existing business district and Willow Street overlay districts would be eliminated as it would be superseded by the new zoning requirements, and then Article Two assumes that Article One has been adopted, uh, and treats, well, it has been, and treats the amendments proposed in Article One as already being in place, but that can be changed, and then lastly, Article Two, if Article Two fails, the new town center districts would only allow multifamily housing by right and not allow any other land uses, that's a, that's a very important point, so we would have a downtown that is strictly zoned for residential, if Article B is voted down, and...
I think that should be bold and underlined.
Yeah.
So you propose to hand, hand this out?
It's a two-page, uh...
I think that was, I confuse everybody.
Well, it was...
I think it is a good set of talking points...
Yeah.
For proponents to talk about.
What do you think about this?
That's even worse.
Okay.
I think it's a, it's a conditional flow diagram that three-quarters of the voters will sort of be scratching their head against, it's complicated.
So it's like a teacher who passes out something, and everybody's gonna be looking at it, and they're not gonna really be paying attention.
They're not gonna be focusing on listening to people, they're gonna be, oh, what's happening here, like, oh, here, now what's this, now what's that?
So better to bring it up, you think, at the time?
I think that we need to have a script for some of us to go up and talk, and then, you know, we can make some of these points, uh, but I think a two-page flow diagram is off the charts, in terms of voter, voter attention.
What's wonderful right now is we have a focus group here, so we have folks who are mired in it, and we have folks who are not mired in it, so...
Right. The folks who are mired in it are trying to, to like, like organize it in some way.
So what we'd love to do is hear from you, what's helpful, what is not helpful, how can we manage this success here, how can we create clarity, and I know there's no magic one right answer, but we have a focus group here, so it's focus.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna be a difficult challenge to get it across, I do love, I mean, people learn that some are visual, some are listening, some will get caught up in the, reading the words on the page and not listening to what's being said, so there's gotta be a balance, you know, this is a lot, I would just scratch my head, uh, for sure, um...
And you live this every day, as opposed to somebody...
Right, I, I did, so, so...
But I also think when you...
That's why I'm not a good focus group, because I'm like, where is Dad?
Wait a minute, so, so, let's, you might be talking apples and oranges, because we have, uh, Mark's version, uh, and, and that, uh, doesn't have much language on it, that was the one you reviewed, Robin, and it's, it's one page, it's one page, and it doesn't have, uh...
Oh, that's complicated, you do have to keep it to one page.
This is less complicated, I think Amel took a page from my book by adding a lot of words, because you added a lot more information, and I think in adding the information, it lost the simplicity of just the four options.
I appreciate your work, but I wouldn't put that in front of the town either.
So, one way to do it though is to, is to layer the information out, like, and to, and to break it up into multiple, like, if it was gonna be slides, or if you were gonna do a presentation or something like that, um, you might consider saying, well, the favorable action goes down through the flow chart, like, and you only, you only show that one first, like, the favorable action is this, because, and then it's like, and then you show kind of like the next scenario, because if you only voted yes on the fifty percent one, and then you vote no on the two-thirds one, like, the favorable, that is against the favorable action because, and you have to kind of like, like, walk it back of, and if you, for whatever, somehow magically, vote no on the first one, but voted yes on the second one by two-thirds, which doesn't seem likely, like, start with, like, the most favorable action first, and then, like, kind of like walk them down through, like, the, let's not go down these paths, um, because it's not in the town's best interest or what have you, but it's kind of like, start with what?
I think you have to do an overview, don't you, like, to give them kind of a...
Well, Mark has done the overview in a, in a draft explanation, but that's two pages.
Can I just, can I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
Probably be brief, uh, so, first of all, at town meeting, a couple of things happen, right, so somebody will stand up and make a motion to move it, probably somebody from the planning board, and then there'll be presentations, there'll be a presentation by the planning board, there'll likely be a presentation by the FinCon, um, a lot of this information could be introduced during those presentations, and the time between now and town meeting, we have an opportunity, uh, we've got, uh, almost three weeks, uh, to start to put, push information out in the community that we think the community needs to know about, what are the reasons that the planning board, the select board, uh, FinCon will vote on this tomorrow night, so you'll have three recommendations out there, um, well, we can explain over the next two and a half weeks why the, the different boards voted in the way they did, we can explain what the high points of the three A proposal are, and the, the good news is that even though a lot of people, particularly yourselves, have been talking about this for over a year now, um, there hasn't been a lot of widespread conversation throughout the community, because there wasn't anything to really talk about, it was, at, to this point, it's only been, you're in favor of three A, you're not in favor of three A, and, you know, you actually have a proposal in front of you, you actually have a zoning bylaw in front of you that can be dissected and discussed, and people can look at it and say, okay, I'm in, I like this, or I don't like this, and now we have something for them to vote on, which is great, and we can, Mark and I can work really hard in the next couple days to have stuff that starts to flow out next week, we can do social media posts, we can do stuff on the website, all of your webpages can have what you want us to have on there for you, and then it's really about getting it distilled down into a couple of presentations and having some handouts.
Yeah, that was the whole point of it, yeah, exactly, that public engagement, because there has not been a lot, and...
That would be the next couple of weeks.
A good, like, a, a goal of that effort would be to have a comprehensive and, and like, well-coordinated message, because in the past, I think it's kind of been chopped, where it's like, you got the one persons, and then you got the other persons, and like, where are they to meet, but it would be nice if like, one presentation kind of, it almost was one presentation with two parts.
Yeah, and I do think that Util is still planning, Matt's on here, you can confirm it, Util is, is already preparing presentation slides to help, help this planning board with this, um, we have a separate, a separate second, um, consultant that will be providing us a report on, uh, Thursday, that will be speaking to, uh, potential economic impacts of the adoption of three A, which people had sought, and on behalf of, uh, FinCon, we had went out and, uh, obtained some assistance in that, so we'll have that report by Thursday, so we'll have these things that we can start to make, now that we know what we're, it is we're voting on.
I guess my recommendation would be that it would be one, instead of having this guy and this guy, this guy, or this consultant and this consult, like, have one presentation, get a multiple present, like, but a cohesive message that...
Multiple speakers and one presentation.
Follows an agenda, as opposed to like, four, three separate, kind of bucketed ones.
Yeah, the only, the only, normally the FinCon is asked to speak, and normally the proposer that speaks, but if the FinCon has no objection, and they vote tomorrow night to coordinate with the planning board, we could probably work it out so that there's one presentation that would avail itself of somebody from the planning board, somebody from the FinCon, probably somebody from Util, maybe Mark.
This is complicated enough, so that I think we, we all need to know what will happen for each of the situations, and that's why sending it through Robin is a good idea, so that we, we, we all on, literally on the same page, that we're not gonna give different answers for different things, because it is that complicated.
Agreed.
But I would think a coordinated effort in, in presentation would be, would be helpful, you know, even if it's, it's each representative from the various boards is presenting, but we coordinate in advance so that they're complimentary and not confusing or contradictory.
We should identify who might be presenting, because, uh, it, maybe to the chagrin of the people here, but, uh, not to me, I will be in Switzerland on July fourteenth, and, you know, that trip's, you know, it's a go, I mean, can't, not backing out now, uh, so, I couldn't, I mean, it would be an economic loss.
Is, um, what's the time difference?
Again, Zoom time, yeah. Uh, you know, we could, the FinCon chair is here, he can't speak for the whole board, but he could speak to whether or not he'd be willing to bring the idea of, uh, you know, consolidated presentation, uh, to his committee tomorrow night.
Did John have anything to add, did he want to make...
Yeah, John, I know you've shared documents in the past, in the past, to get into the fiscal impact that we talked a little bit out earlier, is there a plan to present that same document, something updated?
Yeah, so our, our plan is one to write, uh, book recommendations, which is a given, so we'll, and that's been drafted, and it's in final stage, um, I sent a forty-page deck to the FinCon today, um, and that will be posted on our, on our town website, that, that was our plan, um, we're more than, more than happy to collaborate, to get a clear message out, so, um...
Also gives us...
We'll definitely talk, I mean, we've, I mean, Joe can give you a, you know, I sent him a copy of it today, but I want the, uh, FinCon to go through it, um, so we've put up a fair amount of, um, scenarios and revenues and costs in place, so it's a pretty healthy document, similar to what we did for the school vote, so, anyway, I'm more than willing to sit down and let's collaborate and get a clear message.
It also gives an opportunity to time it out, like, instead of, of half hour, an hour and a half from John, and then like, a half hour from, you know, it's like, we know that it's gonna be kept to forty-five minutes at the most, and then there'll be that time for...
You'll start to lose people, and I think, uh, spreading the message, starting to get the message out, the, by the end of this week, building up the town meeting with, in small bits, helps, and then, um, you know, cohesive, you know, forty-five minute joint presentation with Util involved and planning board and FinCon involved, uh, perhaps Mark, uh, if we can twist his arm, and then, you know, get into the debate, that would be the, probably the most logical.
It'd be nice to hear from Matt also on this idea.
Matt?
Matthew?
Matt, you're on mute. Not that I want to speak for Matt, but I will say that he has indicated that there, you know, Util's on board through the vote on the fourteenth, and they, they know that part of this is helping get the message out about zoning and... about zoning and, and making presentations.
Are they gonna be?
Here comes.
They're here, yes.
Sorry, I have to step away for a second. Yes, uh, happy to get our presentation.
So the question on the table was, um, the idea of the various groups collaborating so that we're coordinating what the message is and what the timing is and the sequence for the message.
Now, you, yeah, you'd be one section of that, Matt, not the whole thing.
With FinCom and some which we're playing with.
My, my recommendation would be to keep it as brief as possible. So I would say FinCom will have two slides.
I like that.
Out of forty?
He had it as well. He had it as well.
It'd be good to see, you know, what they all look like and then how we put them together, you know, before the night before.
Yeah, if, if the planning board wants to designate who they want to participate in the collaboration, I can, Mark and I can pull together a meeting with John and, and Matt in the coming days and so we can start the, the work of getting that down after FinCom has their meeting tomorrow night.
Right.
No, one of the planners sent me their presentations, you know, we can use that as a.
Beg, borrow and steal from other towns that have had presentations or something. Although our, you know, as has been pointed out during the discussion tonight, our zoning here is quite a bit different than what a lot of other towns have done. We've done a, a lot of work in doing a kind of wholesale adjustment to the downtown zoning and change out, so it's not just an overlay district, which is what one of them did. But that's, that can still be explained.
I will say when people call and come in and ask about it, it's always, people don't understand zoning, like, they're not, and brains in like we are, so it's always like, what is this big building? How many units are they building? You always have to step back and say, like, explain what zoning is. So, you know, some of those basic questions can be helpful, just to orient people a little bit.
Should we put a list of FAQs together that we all might think of ahead of time and get those as part of it as well? But a 101 is probably helpful.
Yeah. It's not a mapping to build anything.
Right.
It's just a zone.
I think people have heard. That just obsessed people now. Everyone has heard that message.
Well, I also think in understanding what by right means, because I don't necessarily think people understand what by right means.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, those.
I think that's an important.
Those FAQs are good.
Some definitions. So do we feel that, I like what Joe just said, you know, we'll identify people from each board, we'll coordinate, you know, kind of the flow of a presentation, whether it's 45 minutes as Joe recommended or whatever you come back with. But something that has connective tissue and flows, you don't say, and keep it simple, stupid, I guess, and make sure everyone understands it. I mean, you can get lost in this, but also there are a lot of people that will help. I do like your idea about keeping two different flows. This is what a yes means, this is what a no means, one page each.
Yeah, that's like, kind of build it out and then you can circle back on it if you need to, but.
And then it comes back to an if then. Are we, Mr. Olson, any other comments from your end?
No, and I appreciate all the discussion.
Do you feel like this focus group was useful?
So do we like this flow chart and are we gonna incorporate it? What are our thoughts?
Starting point for a slide deck, but not, uh, ready for primetime handout.
So on that left, that first column, we don't need, yeah. So on that first column, we don't need that last bullet point, I think Marty said, right?
I think the first.
Well, no, I haven't.
Yeah, if you have somebody you wanna, that, you know, have part of Joe's presentation group, is there one member of the planning board or a group that, if Joe were named, he'll follow up?
Yeah, and, and, uh, I actually had, was going to be here on June 26th, but when the date was moved, that, um, that was the trigger. So I can look at my planning board members and they can duck under the desk, but I'll look under the desk.
Do not feel guilty about your trip. If you need someone else to go, I'll go too.
We're gonna be hiking, so.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
The other question I have is an, all the way over on the right-hand column, I'm not sure. It says a yes vote on both Article 1 and 2 is the only option, supported by both planning board and select board.
Yeah, it shouldn't be on there.
I don't know if that makes any, yeah. I, I, it was just a little confusing to me. So I'm trying to say, like, what would be confusing as a non, you know? And I think if we have less bullet points, I mean, I think, I think some of the stuff is really important, like, what happens if we vote yes for 3A and no on form-based code? Like, I think people really need to understand that.
They do, it'd be chaos.
And I think that that needs to maybe be, it might be in the presentation, but if we, when we go to that second vote, I think we might need to reiterate that section depending on what just happened. I don't know, what, what do you think, Marty? I'm just thinking that people can only digest so much. And so, like, when we go to the second vote, I think we need to have that, another, like, mini, like, maybe one slide explanation.
I think it's really important that, that there is a meeting at which the presentation is presented. Basically, a test drive to see how it works. And, uh, I, I think John's right, it, we don't wanna get, we don't want it to be too long.
Correct.
It just has to be succinct and, and really understandable. And I don't think that the, uh, the actual wa, wa, article language or the appendices can do that job. We need other materials. So, uh, I really hate to say this and I'm almost afraid to say it, but I don't know whether the planning board wants to meet on July 1st, whether we would have anything close to, uh, uh, materials ready. July 8th is an option, but not a good one because I leave on the 9th. But I could risk the wrath of, you know, maybe have something on, on that day, not the 9th, the 8th. But if it's just going to be a more informal group, then, then someone, you know, I'll be happy to participate as much as possible, but someone from the planning board has to, another member has to volunteer to be part of the, of the process of being, of getting this presentation together. But I.
Was an advisory committee at one point established and, I don't know if those members, I mean, if they were ever part of the process to develop ultimately, it became the code, I'm not sure, but leader of that group was Jonathan and they're a multifaceted group of unique individuals could support development of a presentation, maybe?
I would have one or two slides for each of the two articles. Right, so for 3A, you have to make people realize that just because you zone land doesn't mean it's gonna be developed. Right, zoning is not that if you're, if you're, the end is the green line in the Mystic Valley Parkway and, uh, you know, thousands of people go by, sure, you know, if you zone it, they'll build it. But, in a cow pasture in Hamilton? So, I mean, that's one misconception. Second misconception is.
But it's by right.
It doesn't, it doesn't make it profitable.
It doesn't matter if it's by right.
It doesn't make it profitable.
It doesn't make any economic sense. That's the key. It has to make economic sense.
I know, but do you really wanna say that and what if it does make economic sense and then the town relied on what you presented? I think it's risky to say that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I've taught real estate economics for 48 years at MIT and I can tell you it does not make economic sense in many locations aside from, you know, the end of the green line and all sorts of urban places, okay? I can't promise you, but the point is, i- i- it's, it's just because you give somebody the ability to do something, doesn't mean that they're going to do it. Okay? The second thing is, there's, you, just a... There are ways of controlling what happens under 3A, starting with form-based code, also with just simple maximum building sizes, setbacks. Just because you allow 15-inch breaker doesn't mean you're gonna get huge apartment buildings. Some people's really still confuse 3A with 40B. It's two completely different things. So just because you're, you're supporting, you know, multi-family apartment, it turns out that the, that the 40B component under 3A is even smaller than it is for the town as a whole. So it's not that, uh, this is going to, you know, add to affordable housing. And 3A is a perfectly reasonable policy under reasonable implementation guidelines for helping to, you know, support transit usage, get people off of roads, cluster development around. There isn't a country, there isn't a city in the world that doesn't have clustered development around transit stops, so. And the final thing is, if you don't do it, you're gonna, you know, be fighting the state for the next five years, one way or another. The state's gonna try and, you know, do this one way or another. So support 3A, learn to love it.
Another thing that gets brought up, uh, is the Winthrop School property. The Winthrop School property, so it might be good to outline the fact that this, uh, these districts that have been developed do not include the Winthrop School property. And if, and if you extended the lease at the Winthrop, Winthrop School property, you might even get more favorable vote on 3A because it'd be, it'd be even less off the, you know, it'd be even more off the table.
I would, wait, why would that be? I mean, it's not, the Winthrop property is not part of the downtown developer's board.
But the fear is that it gets modified.
I wouldn't try and confuse that at all, that's a, I.
I'm saying people, I'm saying you could clarify, my, I was being cheeky, but the, my recommendation was to clarify, not.
Right.
I was being cheeky.
Simple slide shows it's not.
It's not, it's not just.
That's one slide, the second slide is, why support form-based code? And we, you know, rely on a set of design guidelines that wind up making developers look more like Hamilton already does than something else.
Yeah, I think the most powerful one of the. The maps, these, these maps are really powerful images, they, they help explain things. And I think the one that Util put together to show, like, kind of the, for instance, of what would happen if, if the Crosby's parking lot, that whole area was purchased and redeveloped, what would happen to that? And when you see what that looks like in practice under the form-based code, it certainly looks just like Hamilton, right? It's pretty nice, you know? So I think there, there's a couple of these graphics and images, you know, that show how form-based code is protecting the town from becoming.
It's actually protecting the town character.
Joe, were you gonna say something about the lease on Winthrop?
I wasn't saying about the lease on Winthrop, I was just gonna say this, the, uh, ironically, the regulations from H, A, 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 O, HLC don't allow us to, wouldn't have allowed us to use the Winthrop School site. Anyway, they, they, it was considered excluded land because it was under contract to the, to the school district. So we wouldn't have been able to count it and put it into our district. So it is kind of ironic that it continues to be conflated because we wouldn't have been allowed to use it anyway, under the current regulations, so. And we took it out of our plan even before the regulations came up. So we haven't been thinking about Winthrop site at all, but that's what everybody goes. So again, that's an example of people misunderstanding what's, what's in it and what isn't in it. And that's why it's great to finally have a zoning proposal that people can look at and respond to.
And when is the lease up, as Pat was saying, if that was extended?
Uh, it was extended by the select board a year ago, two years, for 10 years. So there's, I think there's at least seven or eight years left on it, I can double check. And I believe there's at least seven or eight years left.
Yeah, it was definitely 10 years, it was extended.
We extended it by 10 years when Sean Farrell was on board, so, last year? So there's at least eight years left on it.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, I think the other important thing is recognizing that the town center as a district is different than, than the other districts. And then they allow them for mixed use and, and multi-family, the way that it's structured. That wasn't just, you know, kind of, as the focus group person, it took me a while to understand that on the outside coming in.
The nuance between the districts would be good to go through.
Yeah.
So who from the planning board's gonna work with, with our group?
It could be two people, right?
I'll be happy to, to work, um, as much, much as I can. And, you know, whoever would like to volunteer to make the presentation for the planning board.
So Marty can be your primary contact and come back with that information through your working session if you want to talk it out.
Don't everybody all jump in at once?
Everybody calls the process for 48 years.
Well, you know, we could put names in a hat and I could draw one.
That'd be dangerous.
We didn't have it on the agenda, but.
We have lost our, uh, chair, so that falls to you, vice chair.
We don't have a quorum to.
Yeah, do you wanna call the time, the select board, uh, lost a member at?
Eight forty-five. We no longer have a, a quorum as a select board.
So you've adjourned, in essence?
By default.
We'll sit and listen and talk, but we can't make any official select board.
More deliberations from us.
Yeah, Marty, if you're, you know, more focus group.
I'm, I'm happy to hear you on, on the topic that we really focused on, which was our report and recommendation and the reason that we did that. I don't need a, at this time, I, I don't need another, uh, uh, comments about the merits and demerits of 3A.
Oh, you're right, it wouldn't be about the merits and demerits, it'd be more specifically just something Mr. Wheaton just said and I believe, um, uh, Mr. Gordon just said.
Do you wanna use the microphone?
Is this? Did we, we closed the public hearing on this?
Yes, we did.
We closed it last time, so it's not just a deliberative session.
This is just deliberation, so I'm giving this at the courtesy to you, so I.
Okay.
At the last meeting, this is.
Just a mic away from your, um, just, help out a quote away from your mouth.
Okay, is it, is it live?
A little bit lower.
Oh, lower.
Perfect.
First of all, Barney, thank you very much for that consideration into, uh, breaking, you know, the flow of what was officially scheduled. Just, I think, as far as the public's confusion, you said the public might be confused about mixing up 3A with the Winthrop site and also about the by right. I think Beth mentioned the by right being a concern. Mr. Wheaton said it may be, by right doesn't mean anything will be built there and that's correct. It's not a guarantee, it's not like eminent domain per se.
And you have to remember, site plan review still applies. So this is unlike a 40B because under 40B, the developer can actually ask the ZBA in conjunction with a comprehensive permit, it, to waive, uh, local, uh, regulations.
So the by right under 3A is still subject to the site plan review? I was, under.
Oh, it does, absolutely.
That can kill a project, site plan review, a local planning board?
Well, it, it would be a rare circumstance, but for example, if the planning board imposed conditions and the developer didn't like them and withdrew the per, uh, application or if by chance we had years of drought and there was insufficient water to put out a fire, I would assume under that circumstance, they couldn't even get a building permit. But, you know, my understanding of site plan review is that it really is focused on public health and safety. So any conditions that the planning board would impose would be oriented toward that. But, I mean, we can't authorize the construction of buildings if there's insufficient water. I mean, it, it's just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. You can't have a building where people can't take a shower or get drinking water. I mean, and if our situation were to get dire, that, that's potential. There might not be enough water pressure to put out a fire.
Right, I just, I haven't seen anything in the regulations that specified, uh, you know, local water flow and all that, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, but that's just part of site plan review.
Okay, I'll, I'll remain skeptical, call that, but I appreciate your answer. Mr. Wheaton mentioned the economics of building a, building a, any kind of project. And under a sort of normal market-based economics, one could argue, okay, it might be prohibitively expensive for a developer to purchase with their own money, uh, say, they see Lamson Site comes up or something like that and this, you know, with their own money, they may need subsidies. But we do have, the whole reason this 3A thing came down is a political decision, partially. There's a pretext that, there's an economic theory not proven that if you build a lot more units, you'll bring down the housing cost per unit. That's not necessarily proven, I mean, New York City would be very cheap if, uh, density meant cheaper, right? So, so we have a political reason where people wanna densify our towns and, um, you know, it's very vague, some people say it's, it's for demographics and such. But since it's politically based, not necessarily rationally based, the state could take your taxpayer money on a statewide basis, something like a millionaire's tax or something analogous, and subsidize developer to purchase private properties and build up your, build up your town. And it would, that would kind of destroy a, a purely market-based economic, uh, reason why you shouldn't worry. I think the state could, the legislature could have a fund that's billions of dollars and say, now we have by right, we're gonna look for properties, pay a lot of money, over-market for properties we think are suitable. So that's, that's where they're going, if you, I don't know, if you realize that, but, yeah.
I hate to use the word speculative, but I think I'm going to listen to our professor emeritus here about real estate economics, and I really think that developers are in the business of making money.
Yes, but they don't care where they get the money. If the state gives them subsidies, they will build.
There are programs like that. The other fact that's really important is that in Hamilton, most of the land that will be rezoned under 3A is already built upon. So that makes the economics even more difficult, because you have to, basically you don't have vacant land to, to develop. You have, you know, neighborhoods and houses that you're going to have to buy up for a million dollars or half a million dollars apiece and then tear down, and, and everything, it, it's just not a very good, not a very good site.
And it's all still subject to the form-based code.
And it is subject to the form-based code.
Not the form-based code is your ace in the hole.
And the form-based code is the ace in the hole because there's 3A compliance, and, and the form-based code is going to keep the scale of Hamilton the same. There will be no high-rise apartments. If you look at, at the two tables that I attached to our memorandum, there are height limitations and the whole bit, roof lines have to be a certain way, setbacks, the whole nine yards. I, I, I would be really surprised if in five years or ten years, there was anything but better development in Hamilton.
Form-based code prevents large blocks of buildings from floating in seas of, sea of asphalt with parking out front. You will never see that under form-based code.
We'll never see a Cumberland Farms again in our town.
Put that quote as part of the presentation? No, I think that's a great, like, one line.
That's a vision.
I know.
That's a vision.
It's the truth.
It is. I know, I think that's why, but I think that's helpful wording for the average person, because that just gave you that whole picture in one sentence.
Thank you for that, Marnie, appreciate everything that's been said. One quick point about public confusion, I guess the Winthrop site was also brought up, and I understand it has nothing to do with the actual territory of the 3A zone. People are just making more of the, a more holistic connection between, I think, housing density that could possibly go there if it was no longer an operating school, and that's, that's the school.
We have our 3A districts and, and barring any unforeseen whatever, that site is not going to be part of the town center at, at what we're dealing with at town meeting. It's off the table. It couldn't be part of 3A, as Joe said, even if we wanted it to be.
I think some people.
Because it's excluded land under the regulations.
I think some people are simply voting against the school consolidation, because if it's an operating school, nothing can build, be built there, it'd be an operating school, so that's where they're, that's where the idea is coming from, you know? There's a potential 40B in the future could be put there if the land is sold off. But Sam Andrews said he would advise the Select Board to sell off the Winthrop property, he said that last year at a.
I never said that.
It was a, it was the, it was an executive, I'm sorry, not executive, a, it was a workshop in July, I believe July of twenty twenty-four, where you said you would advise the Select Board to sell off that property. You didn't get into the details of to who or what, but I could, we could look that up, and I could bring it up in the future.
That would, that would be subject to approval at town meeting.
It would still have to be voted on, but I'm saying there are people in town who have high positions to try to sell it off. Thank you, I appreciate the interruption and, you know.
No, I mean, it's, well, it's, you know, we have a. It's, it's important to understand what confuses people in town.
Make a motion to adjourn. Is that too short?
Do we want to talk anymore about our presentation materials? Do I have an assistant?
You're the primary, so you can bring in an assistant.
Okay. Jonathan, would you be up for this? Come on. It's not that hard. I've done it, and I know, I know you've done infinitely more presentations than I've ever done.
I don't know, Bill Wheaton, Professor.
You can tag team this, if you guys want. And should we leave a panel up there for Q and A?
Nope.
Like when questions come from the audience, like, should there be a, like a panel of sort? Or do we just kind of like point and ask people, respond to questions? Sometimes like the presenters could sit there and field questions just to thought.
Actually, you know, that is Jonathan's biggest skill.
He's ever presented.
Yeah, the questions were, but people there addressing what.
He's ever asked me based on the topic of the question, he's part of, one of the presenters.
Right. We do that a lot, you know, just for during presentations.
Okay, this is to be continued.
So I'm going to second the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, so I don't think I'm going to get a lot of pushback on this, but Pat Norton.
Pat Norton, aye.
Jonathan Poor.
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amal Dawquist.
Amal Dawquist, aye.
Did we lose Darcy?
So we get our power from the National Substation.
Darcy Dale, aye. And Marnie Cratch, aye, we are adjourned.